Before our meeting begins, Commissioner Waddington will offer an invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applying to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Weim, here. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
I'm here to make a motion to use Commissioner Lloyd.
So moved second.
And a motion, second discussion, without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mister, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 24, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 24 meeting and dismiss. For our review.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion, without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our agenda items tonight, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I would like to comment on the Jackson Street Pier and the Shoreline Drive. You are going to pass that tonight so we can get on with construction. And I have some concerns. I have three of them here. This is being done on emergency legislation tonight, which I don't think it should be emergency, because I think you've got some issues here. I asked engineering, where are the final plans? We've been waiting a whole year for final plans. Now, we're voting on it, and we still don't have any final plans. Engineering tells me there are no final plans. Those will be completed as part of the design-build process. So I guess we have to wait until the project's done so we can see what y'all did to that project. Secondly, there's a TIF. Some of the money's coming out of the TIF. And between both of those... Let me go back for just a moment here for the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive. Both of those projects are costing together $16 million. That's the price tag. Now, there's tipping coming out of that. Chesapeake TIF is putting out about $8 million for both of those projects total. There's already a million and a half taken out of that this year out of the Chesapeake TIF that's been committed to developers. And now we're going to add eight more million. That makes 9.5 million total taken out of that TIF. So, I asked, what's the estimated payback on this Chesapeake TIF? I got from staff, no estimate yet. We will keep these in short-term notes, if possible, until the project is completed, and then we'll bond it out. Third, private donors contributing $2 million to the Jackson Street Pier. $2 million. I asked, who are the donors and what amount? Donors have not committed yet, and you're passing this tonight. We have $2 million short on this project because we don't have donors in hand. Will the public learn of the donors and how much each donor gave? Will we know the names? Or is this going to be kept secret? This is a big project here. $2 million being donated by donors. I hope this is not going to be kept secret. If the city hadn't given away 1.5 million to the developers, they would not have to rely on donors donating $2 million. I don't think this should be passed tonight. We need to rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. The two items I want to speak about tonight is, first of all, Shoreline Drive, which is item number one, and then the Jackson Street Pier, which is item number two. On the Shoreline Drive project, the one question I have is that there's been some very little discussion about the approaches from Water Street down to Shoreline Drive, which would be Jackson Street and Wayne Street, that those two areas will still be part of this project but may be paid through a different revenue source than part of this $8 million TIF water and sewer project. And I'm concerned that, if that's the case, that we should be using the TIF for what the TIF was intended for, which would include those two approaches, instead of using other street funds or sidewalk funds that somebody else's project might not get done because we're using that money for this project instead of the TIF dollars. That's the question number one for engineering. The other item there on Shoreline Drive is possible closure of Shoreline Drive between Hancock and Franklin. I think you all probably have this. I think I sent it to everybody. This is the artist rendition that City Architecture did for the city. And what you're seeing here is the Gilbert condos is X-ed off in purple. And the green squared-off area is City Architecture's suggestion on how to fix any perceived safety issues at that corner where the curve coming off of Water Street meets Shoreline Drive. And their remedy was to move that curve more east and then creating some green space area between that curve and the Gilbert condominiums. And then closing off the western entrance into Shoreline Drive... Oh, I'm sorry, Shoreline Park. If additional safety measures are required, the simple solution would be to put up a decorative fence, like they did on the Schaefer Park on Hayes Avenue. They didn't close off Hayes Avenue, you know, for that park. They just put a fence so that any child that might be chasing a goose into the street would be protected from running into traffic. So there's other solutions besides closing off Shoreline Drive is basically what I'm saying. On the Jackson Street Pier, I'll remind you, a lot of you came to the meetings. There were several meetings on the Jackson Street Pier issue. Hundreds of people showed up. Probably in the 30 years I've been following city government, it was probably some of the biggest crowds that we've ever seen at any public information meetings on any city project. Out of those meetings came the idea of adding additional parking spaces on the pier in comparison to the 80 parking places that the consultant suggested. There was a question on why we have to have a 3,600-square-foot closed building on the pier that would impact visual effects from Shoreline Drive and any business that is facing north from Shoreline Drive towards the waterfront, namely, I think it's Hot Dog Tony's, and there's a couple other businesses that would be impacted from their back patios. There was indication along the way from city staff that the suggestion was going to be made that that pavilion be an open-air pavilion. And then now what we're seeing in tonight's legislation is the idea that we're back to having an enclosed pavilion, which we don't think, the Friends of Jackson Street Pier don't think that that's a very good idea, obviously. The other issue that we had was, is the 29,000-square-feet of green space should have been cut back by a third with additional parking places added at the end of the pier. Talking about right now, these plans, 80 parking places. Right now, it's like 270. You guys all know the story. You were at the meetings. And basically, what I'm here to say is, all those suggestions were just completely ignored. You know, you write back tonight approving a plan. Yeah, you may have taken care of Joe Lamb, but when are you going to take care of the public? You know, you have these public meetings. We give our opinions. And at the end of the day, you guys do whatever... The staff does whatever they want to do anyway. So, thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Carter. I don't want to enforce this very heavily, but I should note that the comments at this time of the meeting are limited to three minutes. So, please think about that.
Kim Everhart, 618 Sycamore Line. I'm just here to give my opinion on, again, the Jackson Street Pier and the Shoreline Drive projects. There's things that I like about both of the projects. I don't have a problem with redoing water lines. I don't have a problem with making the streets safer. I don't have a problem with improving these areas for the public. Those are all great ideas. But we are not to a point in the design plans that we should be approving anything. Burying utility lines, that's okay. Blocking views to the public. There's plenty of people out there that don't want views, water views blocked. Does anybody take that into consideration? There are also, as far as Shoreline Drive goes, what are you going to do for handicap accessibility? You are now making an entire block of Shoreline Drive inaccessible to a handicap person that does not have access to a motorized scooter. My grandpa, God rest his soul, he's gone a couple of years now. He didn't have a motorized scooter. One of the things he loved to do was enjoying the views of the water. We would drive him, we'd start at the condos, and we would go all the way down Water Street. That was his favorite drive. You're taking away an entire block of that. So I hope none of your parents, grandparents, anybody like that enjoys those views and doesn't have the access to those things. Because, I mean, you're taking this away from the public. Taking a block from the public. You're taking views over on Jackson Street Pier from the public. You should really take the public's thoughts into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Jeff Crable, 300 East Water Street, Sandusky. I come here this evening to comment on the Shoreline Drive project. And my comments are in the context of, frankly, safety, safety for children. I think that the way that Shoreline Drive right now is configured, well, not the drive itself, but the fact that you have a playground immediately adjacent to it. The playground is either accessible from the street side or you have to access it from Shoreline Park. Either way, children have to go across lanes of traffic to get to it. And heaven forbid they're chasing, well, a goose or a ball or something. I'm very concerned about that. I am not here to speak in favor of one solution over another because, frankly, I haven't seen what the options are as far as design is concerned. But I am very concerned about it. I did hear through the wind that there was a possibility of closing off Shoreline Drive and possibly closing off the west entrance exit, what have you, of Shoreline Park. And clearly, that would have been a step in the right direction in terms of safety for kids. There's no doubt about that. But I will reserve my comments in favor of one option versus another until, you know, those things are better detailed. As a corollary to this, I'm going to also make a comment. I have expressed my concerns in the past to city staff about the intersection of Market Street and Columbus. My concern is that traffic doesn't stop. And it's not that they slow down, look both ways, and kind of keep moving. They blow through that intersection without ever a hint of touching their brakes. And it's particularly acute on the Columbus Avenue axis. I go through there on a regular basis, virtually every day. And I am... I know that I have to be extremely careful at that intersection or I'm going to get broadsided. Or some child going across the street. God forbid a mom pushing a buggy across there is just going to get flattened. That intersection needs to have a full operating four-way stop stoplight, and it needs it now. I am telling you, you are playing with fire if you allow this to continue. And the police, you know, God bless them. They can't sit there all the time. They can't just sit there and issue tickets. We've got to step up. People clearly don't understand what a flashing red light is. They did not take driver's ed seriously, okay?
Mr. Crable, I hate to cut you off, but you've been in it for a while.
I am cut off and happy about it, so...
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Larry Fletcher, 13 Twin Oaks Drive, Milon, Ohio. Mayor and members of the Commission. I'm here representing the Board of Trustees of the Erie County Visitors and Convention Bureau. And last year, we wrote a letter in approval of the Jackson Street Pier project, and we continue to support that project. As I mentioned at the Commission meeting last year, it's not often that our board votes to send these letters for individual communities' concerns because we represent two county region with many different villages and communities and cities. But in this case, however, we received... I received approval to write that letter because we felt that the developers of this plan had done a very good job of gauging the opinions of the community, the residents, the business community. And they took that input to design a plan that accommodated existing uses of the pier and future uses that we think will be a benefit to not only the visitors coming to the region and businesses, new businesses, that will come to the region, but certainly to the residents as well. From national trends, as well as our own surveys, focus groups, and just observing where our visitors go in the region, the attractive waterfront areas that offer opportunities for recreation and relaxation are high on the list of reasons why people come to the region. And this pier plan is an integral component of creating those experiences. And often, people who come here first as a visitor, they end up as a business owner and a resident and a taxpayer. Our organization's mission is to grow the region's tourism economy through collaborative promotion that increases visitation and makes Lake Erie shores and islands, which includes the city of Sandusky, an ideal place to play, live, and work. We believe that this pier plan is firmly aligned with that mission, and we encourage the Commission to consider the many benefits that, if approved, it will provide to our residents, existing and potential new businesses, and to visitors as well. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Earl Everhart, 407 West Osborne Street, here in Sandusky, Ohio. I just come with a few comments about that Shoreline Drive. I see it on your agenda. I see you're looking at doing a design-build, but I don't even think that you know what the project is at this point. I've got 40 years' experience in construction and engineering. I retired from ODOT. I never recall going into a design-build if we didn't know what the project was. So I don't know how you price it out. As far as calming the traffic, there's a lot of alternatives out there. You can raise a pavement. They do that at intersections a lot in a lot of communities, different pavement markings, things like that. So I just ask, what is this project supposed to look like? Right now, I see you've got maybe four or five alternatives on the books. So I'm not sure. I'm just trying to get that cleared up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anthony Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue, Friends of Jackson Street Pier. I have a couple of truck drivers that are in my family, and they drive the large box trucks and semis. They state that because they sit so high in a cab and a truck, 11-foot-wide lanes are difficult to keep distances from vehicles and curbs and very hard to make turns without running over curbs at intersections, possibly shifting loads. With 13 businesses that get food and drink deliveries and supply deliveries on Shoreline Drive at this moment, how is the city going to accommodate these delivery vehicles on Shoreline in a manner that is safe for the deliveries, customers, and tourists? Back still on Shoreline, down Meg Street to Shelby Street, you could create a 14-foot-wide paved path where the original sidewalk is now. The most area you would need from the street is on Water Street, from Sandusky Bay Pavilion to Shoreline Drive. The path would run down Shoreline Drive, back on the original sidewalk, and not block the park entrance. You'll need a few feet from Murray and Murray, and then create the path past the amphitheater to Shelby Street. Run a decorative line down the middle, creating a seven-foot path for pedestrians and a seven-foot path for bicycles. The widest part of a bicycle is the butt sitting on it. And I'm sure bicycles could pass each other in a seven-foot-wide path. Running a fence along the path from Water Street to the park entrance and from the park entrance along the path to the west end of the park and then to the water, done. The kids are safe. Don't screw with the street. Don't screw with the park entrance, and the children are safe. If someone's speeding down Shoreline, we've been told recently, that's the police's problem. Mr. Eric Webser stated at a recent meeting that the city was not moving in the direction of closing down the end of Shoreline Drive. The market building on Jackson Street, I backed him up on this. It's blocking the view from the street. It blocks a view from three businesses that they pay big money to have a piece of property to look at the lake. And their customers want to see it. I don't think it's fair to those businesses to block that view because you're going to build a building and then try to make up things, reasons, to use it. And again, I obviously think this is going to have to be brought up. You cannot see, you do not have a good view of the bay when you're sitting head-in into a parking space. The parking spaces need to be diagonal on the west side and the east side of the north end of the pier. We've been told it's just paint. Then why don't you just paint diagonal parking? Another thing that I've noticed recently is that pier hasn't been cleaned since 4th of July or the boat races. There's been a dead bird down there for three weeks. It's flat now, and now he's got a buddy, another dead bird down there. Nothing's been done on that pier for the last month or more, probably, since the boat races. It's disgusting. And I don't understand why this city cannot send a street sweeper down there once a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Good evening. I'm Bill Siemens, 212 44th Street, and also Chair of the Sandusky Bicentennial Commission. First, congratulations to the Commission, to the staff, and to the community on being named the best retirement community in Ohio by Forbes Magazine. I think that's a great feather in our cap. We held what I feel was a successful celebration in the middle of July on Jackson Street Pier. And I think that hopefully we set the pace for future events in that location. And I think it would be... It lent itself well to that. I think it would be better with some more green space and some more shade structures there. And the Bicentennial Commission is very supportive of the Jackson Street Pier project. Thank you.
Good, Doctor. Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission on any of our agenda items? Then we will have presentation. We've come a long way. We have with us Lindsey Kuhn from the Ohio Auditor's Office. And Mr. Soloway, don't smile too much. Don't ask for a raise.
Well, they kind of gave it away. I am Lindsey Kuhn. I am from the State Auditor's Office, here on behalf of the great auditor, Dave Yost. And my typical line is, this isn't a shakedown. So I am here for good reasons. And it is that you all have had an excellent audit this last cycle. We audit a little over 6,000 government entities across the state of Ohio, and very few even qualify to receive an award, let alone what I'm here this evening to present, which is what my boss, Auditor Yost, likes to refer to as the gold standard. It is the highest achievement that you can earn from our office. Less than 5%... Excuse me. Less than 5% of government entities even qualify to receive this award. So I promised Hank I would only read the juicy parts of the letter from the auditor. Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation for good government, and the taxpayers can take pride in your commitment to accountability. The clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or questionable costs. And the reason I wanted to read that portion is to kind of explain, I think, probably, your everyday citizen doesn't really understand what's all involved in the audit process. I think folks think that you just kind of crunch numbers, and you hope everything reconciles, and, you know, you go about your merry way. But there's so much more in terms of compliance. And to qualify for this award, you have to create a more comprehensive annual report that requires a lot more work. And again, the compliance aspect, I mean, it is, of course, a collaborative effort. I know that you have a lot of folks that help you with your day-to-day operations, of course, working in concert with your council, with your administration, with your citizens really listening. But this is another feather in your cap. And I am truly honored to be here this evening to present this award to you. And I thank you for being excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars. So with that being said, I will hand this off to you. Thank you.
Mr. Soloway, do you wish to say anything?
Well, just again, I accept this award on behalf of everybody here. It's not my award. It's really our award. Everybody around the table, we all work together to achieve the common goal under Eric's direction and Council, Commission's guidance. So I will accept it. But again, it's not my award. It's really our award. So thank you to all the staff and directors that helped us achieve this every year.
It is a team product, no question about it. And for those here and those at home who have not seen the CAFRA or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, you would at first think it's a really boring document. But it's actually a fascinating way to get to know how the city works and all the different parts and pieces that are involved in city government. It's actually much larger than it appears at the Commission meetings or reading articles in the newspaper. It's... And no fault to any of those who report or for the structure of our meetings, but it's just a pretty big operation. And you explain it so well. And there's been a long history in the city of explaining it well. Not everyone has all the materials in the CAFRA that we do. And we have various things that we discuss and debate. But thank goodness, one of the things we don't have to discuss and debate is whether we know exactly what our financial condition is and exactly what our audit controls are. So thanks to you, to your department, to all the department heads who helped with this, and also to the Audit Committee, which has for many years been a great sounding board for you and your department and helps to make sure that we bring best practices in private industry to bear in what the city does. So thank you. Next, we have a... And thank you for being here. Tell the auditor we said hello and thank you. Next, we have Talon Flore, who is our great neighborhood outreach coordinator. He provided a fantastic presentation at Rotary last week. And he is here to give us a one-year review of the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative and proposed two-year initiatives. Flore?
Thank you, Commission President and the rest of the Commission for being with us today and paving the way for the projects that you'll see shortly. So I know you guys have a packed agenda, so I want to be brief tonight. But I'm just going to go over our year-one projects and then go over some of our year-two concepts. With that, we'll get straight to it. So the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative is six different neighborhoods throughout the city of Sandusky. City and Dorn Foundation funded through 2021, both housing improvements and the projects that we're going to talk about here. So in the Cove District, one of the projects that we... That the plan called for was improving waterfront access for pedestrians. So we took two areas at the end of... One at the end of Curran Street, as you can see there on the left half of your screen, and then one on the end of Lockwood Ave... Or Lockwood Street, rather. And just kind of took the existing gravel, pulled it up, put in nice new concrete. And then at Curran Street, we'll go a new bench. And at the end of Lockwood Street, we'll go two new planters that a neighborhood resident has committed to maintaining next spring. So that's one of our projects. Another is the hook installation. So I'm sure many of you have seen. There is a large hook on the corner of Sycamore Street and Meg Street. And that is what you see there on the right-hand side. It's not complete yet. This is an effort to beautify the neighborhoods. But there will also come some landscaping to kind of screen off the home there in addition to sidewalk and bench behind the hook and potentially Cove District gateway signage as well. First through Fifth Street is where we did our Erie Boulevard parklet. So as you see on the left hand there, this project took a structure that used to be old and blighted. It was a bank and dog groomer for many years, no longer in use. So we were able to take that and turn it into a... able to take that and turn it into a neighborhood amenity, and all those residents are very excited about that. So that's one that I'm particularly excited about. In the south of Kilborn area, we did a couple of different things, but most of the focus was on the Hancock Street Corridor. So we revived the Hancock Street Community Garden, implemented a street planter program. The road underwent a surface treatment and looks great, thanks to our Public Works Department, and then also just various programming events in the area, including Neighborhood Improvement Day, cleanups, and also in that neighborhood at large, we were able to support the Derek Steiner mural on Warren Street. The Garden District, so these were improvements to Central Park, for the most part. In addition to the new play equipment and basketball court and shade structure, the city also added over 700 feet of sidewalk to the north half of Monroe Street, where there was not sidewalks previously. So that's very exciting. And then we also began work on the Victory Kitchen Community Garden. That's another amenity that the Neighborhood Initiative calls for. The volunteers that we had last year, and the folks who built the garden beds, the timing didn't work out such that we were able to actually fill the beds this year, so next year we'll get in there, we'll fill them, and they'll have a community garden for the immediate area. In the south side, we did a mobile splash pad unit. This is an underserved neighborhood that had been calling for some sort of water amenities for many years. I think Commissioner Waddington really pushed to see some sort of water option out here, so we were able to secure a mobile splash pad unit in lieu of having a full built-out splash pad unit out there. So that's what you see there in the picture, and this will actually be moved next year from the parking lot of Churchwell to a lot that we own. Yet to be decided, but we'll build it out a little bit more than it is today. In addition to that, we've acquired a couple of properties in the Churchwell Park area as well. I know that's one thing that the Neighborhood Initiative calls for, so we will look to continue doing that. So for the west end, the initial year project was just some small improvements to the Venice Connector Curve. This should not only help folks navigate the curve, I think a lot of people on George Street will tell you that people don't immediately understand this, end up going down there and having to turn around, so blocking the line of sight down that street should help that. And we're also preparing for Venice Road connectivity improvements, which I believe begin next year, which will bring a multipurpose path to Venice Road. And then neighborhood ID and branding. So this is one of the final things that we've looked at this year. We actually had an artist design street sign toppers to help us push our neighborhood branding, so all of them kind of just have little emblems that represent something about the neighborhood, and those will be going out above street sign toppers within each one of these neighborhoods between now and next spring. And then in addition to the gateway, or to the street sign toppers, we will be looking to put gateway installations in as well. And so what you see on the right-hand side of your screen there is the first one that we will look to implement, which is at the corner, or at the intersection of Meg Street and Sycamore Line, where the traffic changes are being implemented. And then finally, neighborhood programming. So a large part of the Neighborhood Initiative is programming, and we try to accomplish that by having different stuff out in the neighborhood, like the cleanup program and Neighborhood Dumpster Days, that was very popular. Neighborhood Improvement Day, as you see up there on the left, upper-left-hand corner, some college students helping out to improve the corridor, warming shelters. Commission called for warming shelters for those less fortunate in the community. That was something we were able to accomplish and supported a Hancock Black Party, not this year, but last. So those were our Year One projects. We tried to do one in each neighborhood. For Year Two, I think we're looking at slightly more substantial projects, but less of them. So one of those projects is the Sycamore Line pedestrian traffic triangle. As you see there in the middle, it's currently just kind of has bollards, but this is an area that could really use some pedestrian improvements, including curb cuts and crosswalks between Reese and Second Street. So that's one thing we're going to look to accomplish with this gateway installation as well. And then in the lower-hand corner, right-hand corner of the screen there, is just a couple images from the Neighborhood Initiative Plan of other neighborhood gateways, potential gateways. So we thank our partners at the Dorn Foundation for their generous contribution to the Neighborhood Initiative. This is where their funds will be going this year. So JC Park improvements. The Neighborhood Initiative Plan calls for several, and identifies several, including entrance improvements, a full-sized regulation basketball court, and a connector path between the north portion of the park and the southern portion. But that's not all that we're going to do necessarily. We'll look to the community and residents to identify other upgrades and improvements that could happen at that park. So there's some images from the Neighborhood Initiative Report on JC. And then just a couple other possible projects that we could begin within the next year. Obviously, some of these, we would have to come to Commission for support, as they would likely exceed the $10,000 threshold, but public art, so I know one of the things identified in the Neighborhood Initiative Plan is underpass improvements, and potentially doing programmatic lighting under there. So that's one project that I'm excited about. West End connectivity improvements, so this isn't our project through the Neighborhood Initiative per se, but we may end up contributing to help that out as well. And then continuing property acquisition in the Churchwell Park area. That area is probably the biggest project in terms of neighborhoods in the Neighborhood Initiative, and I think we're going to continue trying to build up our lots over there as they become available.
Really good job.
And then finally, programming. So we will continue our programming that we've done on the Hancock Corridor, but also do those in other neighborhoods. For example, Warren Street, actually, I think two Sundays from now, on the 21st, we will have an event in conjunction with Derek Steiner and New Day Resource Center, family-friendly, from 11:00 to 4:00, so I'd invite you all to come to that. We'll look to program the parklet that we just put on the corner of Cleveland Road and Erie Boulevard, and then we'll look to activate Wayne Street, JC Park, and Tandra, our Youth Services Supervisor, is working on a very special program. I'll let her talk a little bit more about that when the time is right, but Midtown Supper Club, which is basically teaching children how to cook. It's more than that, basically run a full-service restaurant. So that's an exciting program that she's excited about. But how do we know if all of this is working, right? So we collect stats at the end of each year, and those are housing stats, but also socioeconomic stats of the residents, and we compile those, and we can compare them year to year. And so that information and all those stats will be available on Monday, this coming Monday, October 15th, to the public. So with that, I would take any questions or comments you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Flore. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Waddington. You've come a long way, Mr. Flore, and I see a Neighborhood Director real soon coming your way, and I would definitely support that. I've talked to the city manager about that. You've made some vast improvements. And you've been with us, what, two years?
About two and a half years, yeah.
And going door-to-door with you, you picked up a little milingual, and I like what I saw from you, and I think you got the drive and the ambition to shake that ash at some point in the future.
Other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I see what you're doing. Yes, and I've talked to you before, Talon, you did a very good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to compliment you, Talon, on how far you've taken this effort in the community. You are truly our face in the community. The one thing I will caution you about is going door-to-door with Mr. Waddington. It'd be quite a challenge. And the only warning I'm going to give you is that if he attempts to talk you into grinding a hole in the soles of your shoes, don't do it. I know he does that trick to exaggerate how far he's walked.
Mr. Flore, I too want to thank you for the work that you do, the work that, any city's investments in its neighborhoods is among the very most important work that does. And by bringing additional resources to bring a spark to these particular neighborhoods that we've chosen, I think we're doing a wonderful thing. You can already start to see the dividends that all these different things that we're doing are paying. And to have someone who grew up in this community come back and take your position is really special for all of us. So thank you for the work that you do every day.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be back.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a number of communications with various pieces of legislation the staff has recommended. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So move?
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Thought objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have a number of consent agenda items tonight. Is there anyone who would like to remove any of those items and place them on the regular agenda? If not, then Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is a liquor permit transfer for Cliff's Grocery and Carryout at 809 Pierce Street. Item B are two separate pieces of legislation, grant applications to the Ohio Department of Transportation for calendar year 2018 for the Sandusky Transit System. Item C is a transportation services contract amendment with the Erie County Job and Family Services for the Sandusky Transit System. Item D is payment to the Ohio EPA for a permit to install for the Pier Trac Pump Station and the Farwell Pump Station Improvements Project. Item E is a contract with the Erie County Health Department for bulky and solid waste vehicle inspection services. Item F is for acquisition of nine parcels through the land utilization program, and Item G are changes to the agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the maintenance of State Route 2.
Thank you, Mrs. Cresser. Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda items, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, as presented to the City Commission on the Consent Agenda, and shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. For the folks who are new here, or maybe tuning in at home for the first time, our Consent Agenda is a way that we deal with routine items that often come up every year, or sometimes seemingly every month, that the Commission has accepted as things that we need to do, and there's a lot of point in further discussing them. And as you can see, any Commissioner has the right to take any one item off on their own, so it just allows us to have more time to focus on some of the other topics that we need to discuss. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Those resolutions and ordinances are adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Kokozing Industrial Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Shoreline Drive Rehabilitation Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
You were on the Commission earlier, a few years back with me also, and Mr. Brady in 2011. This has been in disgust, and we didn't have the money at the time, or actually the options to do this, and this is something that I think that we need to approve this evening and get this done, finally get this done. It's needed for downtown area and along the waterfront that's so vital for us to go forward.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I wonder if Mr. Klein would give us a brief explanation or overview of the design-build process that seems to be an issue that befuddles many people, and I can certainly understand why it is a relatively new, by that I mean 15 or 20 years new, concept in the construction business.
Sure. Mr. President, to the members of the Commission and the public, on December 11th, this Commission agreed to award the design-build project to Osborn Engineering, and they had subcontracted with City Architecture. It was extremely important for us at the time to make sure that we had Osborn and City Architecture on board, to ensure that that planning process and that conceptual planning process that took six months to a year prior to that was brought into effect and brought into realization. So we immediately got started on that process, and I'll go into a brief explanation of the design-build and then get into where we are now. So over the last eight months, nine months, Osborn and City Architecture have met with the city many times. We've taken the plans to 30% design. We noticed throughout that process that construction costs were continuously increasing. So we started looking for ways to reduce some of the scope that we had originally had, and it wasn't necessarily reducing anything related to the original intent or the original design. It may have been different materials, things like that. So once we got those plans to that 30% design status, we sent out for the RFQ process. We got eight design-build teams that sent in their qualification packets, and from those eight, staff ranked them, and we narrowed it down to three that we accepted a technical and price proposal from. That technical proposal was evaluated. We accepted the price proposals and did a bid opening for those based on that 30% design, and then we did interviews with each one of them. All of these factors were ranked, and a formula, a weighted formula for each of those aspects was implemented, and it was, it came out that Kokozing, the team of Kokozing WSP and City Architecture and some more consultants like KS Associates that are incorporated into their contract, you know, that was the team that we were going to move forward with. Actually, I'm sorry, KS was on a different contract. So that was Kokozing WSP. What we realized at that time was we needed to start negotiating. That's one of the beauties of the design-build process, was we could then get into the negotiations, where normally if we did a design-bid-build contract, we would have had to enter into an agreement for exactly what was on those 100% plans. This process allows us to start negotiating, and you know, I can't understate the importance of having the contractors in those negotiations. I'd like to actually thank Kokozing for being here right now, but I can't underestimate the importance of having them in those discussions, because they can bring their expertise, they can tell us, hey, have you thought about looking at it this way, have you thought about looking at it that way? Where normally, we just have to pay according to the design. So they were able to find several areas that we might be able to save, some efficiencies throughout the project, during construction, those types of things. Things as simple as raising the water line a half foot or a foot, still below the frost level, different construction techniques that could help them trim some time and money off their schedule. Now, I do want to make it very clear that throughout this process, as I stated earlier, it was important for us to have Osborn and City Architecture involved, so we could have that original intent of the plans, the original intent of the conceptual design, and keep that incorporated throughout the process, throughout the project. And City Architecture is on Kokozing's team to ensure that all those discussions that happened in the city over that year-long time period are being met. That is one of the big reasons why we wanted to ensure that that was being done. As with many projects, Shoreline Drive went from a conceptual project that we were looking at the surface, parking, bike paths, things like that, and it turned into a utility project. That was something that we weren't looking at originally. We knew that we had to do some work, but we didn't realize the extent of the work with the age of the utilities that were out there. So we will be doing sanitary from Jackson all the way to Facer. We're going to be doing storm from the east end to the west end and segments throughout there, and we are going to be putting in a new water line and increasing capacity of that water line throughout the length of the project east of Jackson. To a question that was raised earlier, we, one of the things that I was very adamant about throughout that design process was that we really needed to ensure that that little block of Wayne and that little block of Jackson between water and Shoreline were included as part of this project. There's a large, or there's a great demand for curb, especially along the Wayne Street where it's very deteriorated, and for that parking, so I wanted to ensure that that was part of this project. Now, So I wanted to ensure that that was part of this project. Now, there are no separate funding sources, as was mentioned earlier. It's all included in this base bid portion of the project for the resurfacing and curbs and all that work that would be done there. So all those initial thoughts and the initial designs and the initial conceptual ideas are included in this project, dumpster enclosures, things like that. So when it comes down to it, I mentioned earlier that we did go through that detailed analysis of costs and things like that. So what we had elected to do was include some alternates. Some of those alternates, as with many normal construction projects, you would include those alternates. So in this one, we had, I believe, three or four alternates included in the project. The first one was doing some work on the east end of Shoreline, and we can get into that later if you'd like. And the other one was burying utilities between Jackson and Wayne. The section from the Marina, the transient Marina, to Jackson, which is the piece that has been discussed with the Chesapeake Lofts throughout this process, was included in the base bid. But we weren't sure where those costs were going to come in when we actually went through the process. So our recommendation is to award the renegotiated base bid. And I would like to thank Kokozing and their team for doing an absolutely wonderful job of working with us to get this project awarded and to get this project in a cost that we can afford within the revenues and the resources that we have. So right now, we are recommending the renegotiated base bid and Alternates A and B for a total project cost of just over 8.83 million. We did go to Planning Commission and Bayfront Corridor Committee, who both approved this. There was quite a bit of discussion, but it was approved at both places. And then, you know, in the end, this is something that I do not envy Megan Stuckey, the project coordinator in her office, because we do have 10 funding sources for this that she's going to have to keep straight, because we did have to get very creative. And one thing that the, that the design-build team made clear to me towards the end of this, these negotiations, was that because of the delay from July until now, it was, their construction costs were looking at pushing things into the year 2020. It was very important to them that they can get started now in October, get started right away. And if not, then those costs are going to increase, and so is the construction schedule would be pushed back into, possibly into the summer of 2020. So I would defer to Finance Director Soloway about the TIF for these. The question that came up about the TIF, but if there are any other questions, I would certainly be willing to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Other than just, there were seven questions that came from the podium, and if we go down the line and answer them, that's what I'm looking for. Some of that might have been included in what he said.
Do you want to re-ask the questions?
No, I don't re-ask them. I presume they wrote them down when they said it. So just whoever's in charge of it can answer.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Aaron covered all those questions except about the TIF.
He didn't talk about donors.
Donors.
About donors, a part of the project. What part of the project is in jeopardy if we don't get the $2 million in donors? That was asked.
Through the, through the Commission President to Commissioner.
That's item two. Mr. Whoopsir.
That's what I was going to say. That's the pier.
So what was your other question?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I'd ask that Mr. Soloway talk about the TIF aspect of the questions that were presented.
Ms. Soloway?
Yes, I've just announced and read my response to her question. And then basically, we're going to look at issuing notes until the project's, you know, what the final cost, the total cost is before we bond it out. That's sort of the short-term plan on that. We won't, we won't know what a debt service payment is until you go to market. You know, things change, so you couldn't, can't guesstimate that at this point. But the TIF has been coming in very well as far as the revenue side, you know, support coverage for the debt. So it's a matter of what the market dictates as far as an interest rate once we get there.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
I did hear someone talk about the safety factor. So we could just rewind to the safety factor of rerouting the street there along Shoreline Drive by the, by the park there. So can we read, can somebody define that for me, the safety factor? What, how we look at that, or what is the issue there?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart, that particular block proposed several responses as it related to safety. One is the secondary entrance to Shoreline Park was something that a lot of traffic would cross from the parking lot through that lane to the park, as well as just the access of the park, or the proximity of the park to the street. Another issue was the, people take that curve pretty fast, and it can be relatively speaking, a blind curve. And to have that so proximate to a playground was something that was raised as a challenge. Another is that the Gilbert condominiums, I believe there were, what, 13 garages, Aaron, for those? Each of those right now back out into the right-of-way, and they're doing that kind of blind. And there is a relatively speaking, older resident crowd in that building. And so you have a blind curve happening where people are coming around pretty fast, and you have people kind of looking over their shoulder where that could create conflict. Now, I will say, so we've heard from a lot of people that based on those safety concerns, want to see that intersection reconfigured in some way. One recommendation was to close it to vehicular traffic, to maintain pedestrian traffic, expand Shoreline Park, and then create an access drive so that the Gilbert condominiums could all pull out into one access drive, but that wouldn't be able, because of curb, to be out into the right-of-way. That was just one option that was presented, to be honest. I think staff came to the conclusion, and I think Mrs. Eberhart mentioned this in her remarks, or maybe it was Mrs. Harris, that we, we feel that there are people on both sides of this issue. And so the goal is to find a compromise that both calms traffic, but maintains traffic throughout this intersection. And I believe that that's the, those are the designs that we will have the consultants focus on in the next phase of this.
So essentially, some of the, well, what I'm hearing is the safety concerns are based upon the playground and then the residents.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But, you know, it kind of seems, you know, to me, it's a little bit, I don't know, it's kind of late in the game to say that we're going to talk about safety. If we're talking about safety, we put the playground there. We just put the playground there. We could have put the playground, as I look at the map, we could have put the playground away from the street, but some, for some reason, without, I don't, I don't want to call it a lack of planning, but an oversight of putting the playground next to the street sort of, we caused, we caused the safety issue. So.
It's been there for some time.
Are we redesigning for something that we made an error on? Shouldn't we just correct the error in regards to crossing with kids in the playground? I mean, we did put a playground right next to the street. So I'm thinking that with all the swabs of land on Shoreline Drive, we could have put the playground, you know, closer to the pavilion, for instance. Children play next to the pavilion, and probably would have been safer there as far as that. As far as the older residents, I am all for looking out for older residents, because we have other senior buildings downtown. In fact, we have multiple senior buildings downtown. But from my knowledge, from today, I guess, you know, when we talk about this, we're sort of operating on a feel-good, because we don't have any traffic studies, we don't have a record of incidents down there, we don't have anything. So before we get into, you know, putting out new plans and doing something, I think we should at least study it. Get it, you know, get statistics from the police department, get statistics from, you know, from the engineer's office. We don't even know how many cars are driving through that little portion of the intersection, which we could easily do by putting a traffic counting meter down there. I mean, we don't even know that. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse down there if you, if you feel what I'm saying there. So I think that's just a little bit, it's a little bit premature on calling it that. So that's just what I see. I mean, I'd like to see at least a reason why.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I think it might provide a lot of clarity for that issue, Commissioner Lockhart, if Mr. Klein would explain to us exactly what we have in the base bid now. And the beauty of having a design-build process is going to allow us to deal with that issue in some fashion, whether it's a compromise of closing it off, remaining open, or calming traffic. Our design build, because we're only 30% into the design portion of this, go ahead, Mr. Klein, I'm speaking for you.
It's all right.
I should.
Mr. President, yeah, the, the nice thing about the design build is it gives us that opportunity to work, again, like I said, to work with the contractor, to come up with a design at that location that can fit within the budget that's provided at that location. We have plans in the base bid. We have included that resurfacing of that turn, exactly how it is, eliminating that drive entrance to Shoreline Park, and putting a curved median between the Gilbert condos and Shoreline Drive to give one entrance and exit from the condos. So there are some traffic control measures in there. But like I said, throughout the process, and when we talked to our stakeholders, we wanted to afford ourselves the opportunity to evaluate and incorporate other traffic safety measures at that block. And again, that's the beauty of the design build, that we can work with Kokozing, work with their design team, to make sure that we are analyzing those things. We do have the traffic information, and we can get that to them so that we can proceed forward and get through that public involvement process to make sure that we're reaching out and meeting the needs of not only the people at that intersection that live there, but the people that play at that playground and use that park and drive that road. So that's something that we will proceed with and go down the road and look at our budget as we're moving forward.
The niceties of design-build concept are, I understand those. If you're dealing with raising water lines and other small engineering things, that's fine. This is, we're talking about a complete concept change. And before I'm prepared to support this, we'll need to make a decision that the street will remain open, or you're going to close it. It's as simple as that. All that's at issue here is folks would like access to the view that they have, that they now own and are afforded, driving along that street. It doesn't take, and the number you show, we talk, it's $42,000 worth of design discussion and coming up ideas for traffic calming. I'm not prepared to deal with that. We have three full-time engineers on our staff, and we should be able, before we go into a $17 billion project, to be able to agree on the important aspects of the project. This is important. You close the road or not, I'm not prepared. It's nice that you have all these, what you call are opportunities. I'm not sure that they're necessarily opportunities. They're, they're opportunities on one hand, if they're used appropriately. But this is something that unlike on regular businesses, where their goals are very, very narrow, and they know exactly what they're trying to accomplish, the owners of this company have varying ideas of what is a good endgame here. So we don't get to let you and the staff decide based on, I'm not prepared, based on saved some money here, made it easier for the contractor to accomplish B, doing away with features that the public may very well want. And that's really what we're setting ourselves up for. I'm more than willing to support those minor changes of things once we settle on the concept. But the idea of, do we close that street and deny it, deny folks access to it, that needs to be decided ahead of time. And then they can design-build whatever kind of features they want. That's, that's right off the top. As long as, likewise, we have not discussed in any detailed deal with taking the wires down. If, if the view at the west end of the street is important in the center, then the view is important at this, at the east end. So you might as well consider, you don't have to put it in this contract, but if view is important, then the trees in Shoreline Park have to be addressed. Those sycamore trees block the view for all of us. Can't see, see the point. And if we've decided as a community that view is important, it's not just important to folks down in the center of that, of Shoreline going, going west, and the folks toward the other end. The base bid was fine for, for dealing with the Chesapeake as a safety issue. The poles are too close to the building, so they can't keep, maintain their building. The rest of this is arbitrary. I agree, we should take the wires down, because in the long run, we'll be happier that we did it. But we're not just going to turn this over to you guys folks picking and choosing individual things on here. I'd like to, to support this, need to agree on, on the, on the major designs that we're going to have. And that's where I feel about it. And financing hasn't been, I'm guessing on financing, to be honest with you, the idea that we're going out on the hook for $17 billion, and the TIF is doing fine today, I'm not, I'm not astute in finance at this point, and I'm not going to fight about it. The community and the rest of this commission seems to be comfortable that 15 years from now, there's plenty of money, and it's going to take care of itself. And I'm going to say, okay, I don't really know, but I'll go with the flow. But I'm really not, not wholly comfortable with the concept of what, that we're following here, because I'm not sure what, how we're going to turn, how this is going to turn out. Thank you.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we appreciate the feedback of the Commission on this issue, as well as the feedback that we've heard from the Commission and I do think staff is fully prepared to state that we will not make a recommendation to completely close traffic in the last block of Shoreline Drive should the vote pass tonight.
Glad you're prepared. Let's hear it. Commission, where are we at?
Ms. Bull, as you know, I can't discuss it, so.
Sure, I realize you can't. Comments? Where are we at?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I support, support the recommendation of the city staff. I think they put a lot of time and energy into this, working with the contractors and all. I think it is a good business decision to work with the community, as well as the contractors and the staff, to address these issues. I, I know there were comments made tonight in reference to the street. I, I want to see this pass, but I don't want to see it fall on something like that. So I am full support of this legislation for tonight as it is. But if Commissioner Poole would like to have some type of definite answer on the street, then I believe we should try to work with him, because again, I think this is a good idea.
Ms. Twine, are you making a motion to amend that? I'm not really quite sure what you're saying.
No, I'm not making a motion to amend. I'm just stating how I feel about the current legislation as it is.
Through the, if I could, through the Commission President to Commissioner Twine in the body, I don't think staff believes, in order to ensure traffic stays open, that this legislation needs to be amended. The dollars that Commissioner Poole referred to as it related to the $40,000 plus were not for the design of a change to this. They were actually for the implementation and the difference between what is initially proposed and what may happen there. And we do believe there are some traffic calming measures that that would be critical for that. So should the Commission choose to amend, the legislation is certainly your prerogative. But we don't believe to ensure that that stays open, an amendment is necessary at this time. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
What boat it is. I, I guess, well, one, one thing. Who's, who's leading the project? Is it the architects? Is it the contractors? That's, that's, I have two questions. So one is, who's leading that?
Ms. Twine. To Mr. President, leading the project from the city side, that would be me. But we have contracted with Osborn to oversee the construction and be the construction administration firm. And Kokozing would be the lead contractor, and they've teamed with WSP to, and City Architecture to do the design work.
Okay. And then stepping back, once again, I guess they, they mentioned the safety of the road and how that should go. Looking at that, I think it was someone in the audience that mentioned the safety of other streets. And so I kind of look at it as a priority and reasonability. Is it, are we just doing this for a feel-good, or are we doing this based upon some science or data that we already? or data that we already had? They've mentioned that there are other streets that are just as unsafe, or they believe to be unsafe, Market Street and Columbus Ave, or other streets. So are we prioritizing this over other potential emergencies in the area, or safety concerns? And also, I'm still not a hundred percent, I guess it comes down to thirty percent. Are we comfortable with knowing that we are doing this based upon thirty percent of the project on a design-build format of doing this?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, any street that we're in a process to redesign, we would look at how to make safer. So we're not designing a solution for Market and Columbus today, we're designing a solution for Shoreline, and that's where that recommendation comes from. But I would reiterate, I know Director Klein agrees, we believe it is critical to get the full support of the commission tonight for a variety of reasons, one of which is it allows the project to proceed and to proceed quickly, which will prevent delays, not passing on emergency. We've been told that it will add cost and time to the project, potentially extending it into two summers if the project is not able to proceed. So therefore, if an amendment to the legislation eliminating the change, or the alternate for the forty thousand for treatments to Shoreline Drive is a critical piece for the passage of this vote by either, any commissioner, including Commissioner Poole, we fully support that. We were just saying we didn't think necessarily to achieve that end it was necessary, but I believe in the design-build process here, and can speak to that more directly if he needs to. But that's the reason we're looking at Shoreline now, is because we're redoing Shoreline now, and it badly needs it. But again, just to get to, Commissioner Poole had a comment after the statement of that it wasn't necessary. If amending this is critical to secure those votes and allow this project to stay on time and on budget to proceed, we support that wholeheartedly, so.
Well, I, you know, I just want to make sure that, I'm all for this. I believe we should do development and move forward in our city, but I want to make sure that we're doing it right at the time that we have that opportunity, which is now. You know, we put a playground right next to the street, who'd have thought about it? But we did. You know, that wasn't the best choice or the best place for it, so I just want to put a little bit more thought into the project that we have going forward, to make sure that we're doing them right now. What we do is impacting not us, but the generations that come. What we're doing now is going to last us for the next forty years, and so I want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can now, today. That's what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
There's a compromise in here, and by gosh, we're going to find it. And I think, I think we've kind of beat this horse long enough. If it takes making a motion that we do not close that road off, but that we make every effort to provide traffic calming initiatives, and direct both our city staff and Osborn Engineering of that motion, then I'm willing to make that motion right now. I'm not going to lose this project over what item we figure out to make kids safe. Making kids safe is very important, but there's probably a half a dozen ways of doing that. Everything from putting a fence up, to putting up speed bumps, to some additional curbing, there's a way around this, to satisfy everybody's concerns here, and that motion, I think that motion's on the floor.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting that we table this?
I'm not suggesting we table it, I'm suggesting that I make a motion to amend the legislation, to say that we, as a commission, will give instruction to Osborn Engineering that it is our desire to not close that road off, to find traffic calming measures other than closing that road off.
I'll take that as a motion, and then the question is, is there a second?
Apparently it's not going to pass, is it?
So there is no second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion has been made to, I want to make sure we have it clear, so that, Mr. Heyberger, why don't you take a stab at making sure that it's perfectly clear, and make sure that's Mr. Brady's motion? I don't want to get involved in.
Sure. So what I have is that we would add a line in the legislation that the contractors are not to close off the street, I'm just paraphrasing, but to not close off the street and take other traffic calming measures.
That's correct.
That's consistent with your second, Mr. Poole.
Yes, that's consistent.
Debate on that motion to amend.
Chairman, I've already said what I think about that. I do want to point out that, first of all, my position on this has been known long enough that if there's any serious interest in incorporating it, it would have been done by now. And the fact that I had to second it, and there's still reticence, hesitation from other members, I'm glad I insisted on it. I'd like to know why they're so insistent on closing that road.
Mr. Chairman.
For those who are unwilling to actually state that upfront.
Mr. Brady.
I don't mean to speak for my fellow commissioners, but I am hopeful that their reticence to get into this and to second that is because they believe, as I believe, that our legislation incorporated the ability to do that anyway. So I'm, my motion is to guarantee what I believe you think is very important, and I believe my fellow commissioners believe that that importance was already incorporated in the legislation that we had. And I'm not trying to get anybody off the hook or speak for any of you, so.
What did you just do?
Jump in.
I agree with what Commissioner Brady said, but I also say this, is that I do take into consideration the public input, those people that live in that condo, the city staff, as well as the contractor. And I feel, I'm reticent to make a decision based upon closing or leaving the road open, because I think there needs to be more input from the public, as well as the city staff and contractors, who are expert in these types of things. So that's why I'm reticent to make a decision one way or the other, because I think we need to have more input as they're going through this design-build process.
Yeah. So the motion to amend remains on the table. Further debate on that motion to amend.
And that was to amend, I'm sorry, that was to amend to keep the road open or not keep the road open, I think.
The amendment was to keep the road open.
Ah, I see, if possible.
No, no, no.
No.
Oh, that was.
For certain.
Well, you know.
True.
I'm good.
Okay. Further debate on the motion to amend. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll on the motion to amend?
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
That motion fails.
Fails.
Further debate on the legislation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
This, as you can see, there's some disagreement among the commission, and the commission represents the people of this city. So I guess this is an example of things getting to the table prematurely. When they get to the table, they should at least have some understanding by all parties, or at least the majority of the commission. That's how we vote, that's how we make decisions. So as I said before, I'd like to make sure this is done right, because we're doing this for the generations to come. We're doing this for the kids that we have, and so if it's to me, then I would say we should table this until we get it right, and I can make a motion, but if not, I can't see that it will go further, at least not upon my vote.
Mr. Whoopsir.
So, to be clear, I can make a motion to table it right now, but if the rest of the commissioners, as Mr. Brady says, don't support that, that's fine, but I don't see that it will go any further than.
Mr. Whoopsir, ask to be heard, Mr. Poole.
Through the commission president to the city commission, the staff believes it's critical for timing and funding purposes to keep this going tonight. We would support a second motion that would achieve the same goal. We actually, staff was never completely sold on the idea of closing Shoreline anyways, it was one option that we wanted to consider. We never actually suggested doing it, we gave ourselves the option to do it. And so ultimately, we know that there is one specific alternate that is in this plan that we know would give us the ability to fund the closure. We would recommend if the commission would so consider a second motion, and pass a second motion, that would remove that alternate from this contract, so that we could still vote on it tonight and move forward. We think it is critical, and you will cost time and dollars if this vote doesn't take place in a positive way tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, to finish, to back that up, or to follow that up, it's more than just closing the street for me. I'm looking at a thirty percent project that I'm concerned about, knowing the future of it, how it will end up. You know, the other commissioners would feel free to vote as they please, but I see a little bit of, you know, when you're spending seventeen million on one section, another thirty million, it will probably get up to forty million dollars, I think, you know, people should have it right the first time. That's all I'm saying. So I think it takes, it should take a little bit more time, with a little bit more thought, and we can get it to the best that it can be, the best that it can be for the entire city.
Mr. Chairman.
I support, earlier, Mr. Whoopsir said about staff, and that he wants to go forward with the way it says. I'm prepared to support that tonight, the way it's written now. Let's vote on this and get this thing passed. It's been a long, long time. You've been around a while, Mr. Poole, Commissioner Poole, correct? It's time to get this, you know, let's get this thing passed. It's design-build, read your packets.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I read the packet. We have a project that thirty percent is designed, let's assume thirty percent is designed. A major change has been proposed by staff that we, the people have not, don't agree needs to be done. We all don't agree. Closing the street or not closing the street is a major change, for which staff brought that to the table for us, and we're bringing it, and you want us to vote on it. I have seventy percent of the rest of the project that's yet to be designed, and I have no intention of setting a standard here, where we find out down the road that this entire project has been turned around to suit who I don't really know. It's not that the staff is terrible people or anything, but the process of, this is made, we're making these improvements for the public to enjoy them. Staff deciding that we're going to save some money here, as I said this before, and it makes it easier for the person that's building it, for whatever reason, some of those things are good, but making major design changes in this, that we're not going to, that we're going to be faced, just as we are now, oh, the price is going to go up if you don't pass it, it's an emergency, you better a year and a half to do this. And now I got to make a decision here over a piece of stuff I've read for four days, I've had four days to read, and seventy percent of what's going in the future is on, we don't know. So I'm not going to support that. And I only ask you to say one thing, that you would agree that the community would be better off having access to the view along that road, and that we would save the children through other methods. And if this commission won't do that, it's not staff anymore. If this commission won't commit to that, the constituents that I voted for, that I said I would do what I thought was in their best interest, I'm going to do that, because it means the rest of this project is in danger of being something completely different we don't know about. And I won't do business that way. And that's why, if you want to take it out, come back next week, day after tomorrow, for a special meeting, so that you don't lose any time, that's fine. But I'm not voting yes for this alternate with the way it's written. It just does not give us the people enough control over what their seven, sixteen million dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Whoopsir.
Through the commission president, again, staff, however the commission chooses to address the issue that's been raised by Commissioner Poole, staff assures the commission, we will not bring a recommendation. We are comfortable with, we are comfortable and actually would recommend a motion to remove the alternate that provides the funding for the closure of Shoreline. Kokozing is here and can speak to those assurances tonight, should the commission so choose, but we again urge, and again, it was already voted on to do this as a design-build process. We don't believe that tonight is the time to re-vote or relitigate on that issue, which is why the design is where it's at at this point.
It can stay design-build.
But I mean, there's a lot of questions. Exactly, and so what I would say is this, we're building the conceptual plan as adjusted. The only, the only change that would need to be made to give Commissioner Poole the assurances he needs, is either a commitment from us or Kokozing, whether that's in the legislation or not, or alternatively, if he needs the commission to do something to remove that piece, we absolutely would urge you to do that and pass this tonight. And again, we'd urge unanimous acceptance of this from Commissioner Lockhart, because you will cost us over a hundred thousand dollars in six months if you don't approve this tonight, so.
Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Whoopsir, we're going to spend seventeen million dollars, that's far more than two hundred thousand dollars. So get this right, I'm telling you to build it the right way the first time, to build seventeen million, which is ultimately going to go all the way down Shoreline Drive, to Jackson Street here. The people that have lived here for many years have invested their lives in this community, and these are their dollars. So two hundred thousand dollars out of seventeen million dollars is far less of a risk than getting seventeen million dollars wrong. And so I'm saying, and I don't know if it's clear enough to the rest of the commissioners, it should be, that today, I'm saying it should be tabled until we can come into agreement to do this the right way together. But if not, we don't have to do it at all today, and we can go back, and they can go back and get it together. So once again, I'm going to say, as a matter of fact, I'll make a motion right now, and anyone can second it or not, I'm motion to table this until we get together as a group and get this right. So I move to table this for the betterment of this project, and we do it right.
There is a motion to table, is there a second?
So you can vote off, I'll second it, you can vote on it.
Motion second is not, it is not a debatable motion, so, Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll?
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Mr. Brady?
Nope.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Motion does not pass. We're back to debate on the legislation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the legislation to remove the alternate A in reference to the closing of the road.
Second.
Then a motion to second. Discussion on the motion to amend. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll on the motion to amend?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That motion, or that amendment becomes part of the legislation. Additional debate on the legislation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Just to reiterate, I'm still not happy with the way the course of this, this is going, that we don't know exactly where we will be and where we're getting. So I tried to make that completely clear to the public, so.
I do have one more question. It came from the podium. What is the game plan for, with the eleven foot, with the changes on Shoreline Drive for semi-delivers? What did you guys come up with to make that work? Are there very few, I don't know anything about it, but struck is a worthwhile conversation.
Mr. President, yeah, that was something that, you can design a lane width anywhere from nine feet to wider, and this is one of the things that it was, it's looked at it being a ten-foot lane width out there. We've talked to WSP, we've talked to the design consultant, we've spoken to Osborn as well, and that's something that we, both design consultants, Osborn and WSP, feel comfortable with the turning radius, and they're very aware, because there are deliveries back there, and they're very aware, because there are dumpsters back there, that those turning radius are extremely important, and making sure that everything is placed and located where those turns can be made.
What you're saying is semis will not have a problem making deliveries to people's businesses, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
It's that's been plugged in, and we're not going to hear later on that there's not enough room to maneuver, stop, make deliveries? I just want to make sure you guys talked about it, and we recognized, and we said, this is the best it's going to be. You know, I need to hear where you're at.
Through you, Mr. President. We could provide a seventy-five-foot wide lane, and the truck drivers would still complain that it's not wide enough, and they'd still go up on the turn, so.
It's fine.
Our design engineers have said that it's fine.
It's fine, okay, done deal.
Further discussion on the legislation. Mrs. Cresser, would you hold the commissioners' place on the motion first?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the legislation?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That legislation is adopted. Item number two, please, Mrs.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Donley's Incorporated of Ohio for the Jackson Street here rehabilitation project, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm up for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension roots in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion second. Then a motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
If, uh, I know the question was brought up on item two about the capital fund, the TIF proceeds, uh, Chesapeake, on the year, the length and that, and... Get that.
Uh, Ms., uh, yes, Mr. Han, Ms. Soloway, so the, the question was, um, I think similar to what you addressed in the earlier conversation is, uh, just exactly what is the, what is the, uh, debt service going to be on the TIF funds? And I listened to you explain that before, and you said, uh, essentially that you use short-term notes until you knew exactly what the amount was, then you'd go out to bid, the bond market moves around from time to time, uh, and then you'd know exactly what the debt service was at that point.
That's, that's correct, and we would expect if passed tonight under emergency, we would be back within the next thirty to sixty days to get legislation to approve us to go get the short-term borrowing done.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brady.
The important thing that I think the commission, and I think our residents want to hear, is, and I think I've heard it several times from you, but it bears repeating again, is, tell us about our debt room. We have room to do this, do we not?
Correct, it's a, it's a revenue-backed bond, because the TIF is not, uh, the debt would not be, our intention would not be to make it a general obligation-backed bond, it would be revenue-supported by the TIF, so, it doesn't impact your debt limit, since it has a dedicated revenue stream for a certain period of time, so...
Thank you.
How long, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole.
How long are we gonna do this?
I believe it's twenty thirty-eight is when it falls off, so, ultimately, whenever we do the financing, that's when it would end.
With regard to, okay, that TIF covers a large area, how much TIF do we have left to do anything else besides just what we're doing? What do you, what do you finance the debt?
The intentions with what commission has passed so far, it's come up already, is, uh, I believe it's a million-dollar commitment to the Fike Building renovation, and then the half-million dollars for the Cook Building renovation, so those are the only other two items that we would potentially include in that borrowing once we get there, so...
Then we're gonna be, how much was total?
So, your total would be...
Roughly.
Ten million-ish.
Okay, so we're gonna have ten million dollars committed off of just the Chesapeake. Okay. What else do we need done downtown? What are we gonna do for, what else do we have on our agenda in the next twenty years? Any thoughts on that?
Not me, sir.
I got three buildings done, I got three buildings done, and I, I got water lines, and the water lines on Water Street, Martin Street, ain't any newer than the ones on Shoreline Drive. Uh, so, I'm trying to just make sure we're really glad that we're, I don't wanna end up raising the water rates, because, whatever, we're good down there, fine.
I think Mr. Soloway's saying, that's why we get paid a hundred dollars, he gets paid more. He doesn't have to answer that question.
Yeah, okay.
But, Ms. Soloway, a good question, that's, I think a part of what Mr. Poole was, was probing, uh, was, uh, if, what's the, what is it estimated presently of the total capacity of the TIF payments, uh, in the, in the Chesapeake TIF with support in terms of bond funding?
It's generating about six hundred thousand dollars a year, and it's generated way more than, um, the current debt service has been about four hundred, four hundred fifty, so we've been basically banking quite a bit of money since the creation of the TIF. Um, and there's probably about a million dollars that's actually available in that account already. So, I mean, that's, once we go to the market, that'll be the kind of things we'll talk about, that will show that we've had a pretty good revenue-generating stream for a long period of time, and the trends are expected to continue, the real estate market has been positive, uh, valuation's been good, so we feel confident that we'll, maybe not as a guarantee, a lot can happen from now till twenty thirty-eight, but we feel confident that, even being conservative with some numbers, that we would have enough revenue generated from the TIF to, to cover the Jackson Street Pier, Shoreline Drive, the Fike Building, and the Cook Building, uh, economic development initiatives, so that's, that's kind of our plan from this side of the table.
Thank you, Ms. Soloway. Mr. Heybert, a question was asked about the, whether the city, or whether we would know the identity of the donors, once they did make their contributions to the Jackson Street Pier. And I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the answer that you're gonna provide is, we can't accept those donations without having a vote, and those folks would be disclosed, is that correct?
Exactly, and then, and there's many other ways that, that would come before, a public records request as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Last question, donors that we don't have, what impact does the two million dol, whatever the amount was, if they don't donate? Where, what, how are we coming up with that mon, with that, that money?
Mr. Whoopsir, you and I had this conversation, uh, also about what, 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 what would happen if there was a shortfall in the funding that was being offered by various donors?
Through, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we believe that we will not have an issue based on commitments, we just have not formalized agreements, and we don't want to break the news of potential funders that they're committing to this project. That being said, uh, if indeed any of those fell through, the alter, basically the alternates on this project would not be able to go forward, and we've identified two specific changes that would be made to the project that would mitigate those needs. And so, we're, we're very confident the funds will be in hand, but we're also very confident that we will deliver the project without those funds, without jeopardizing any future, uh, any funding whatsoever from the city from any source.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
What were the two, the two ma, the, the things, the two alternates that were not going to get done if you don't get that two million dollars? What are we talking about?
One of the, uh, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, uh, things such as the pavilion, as well as, uh, the homeland security improvements, one of those, one of those issues is actually related. It's not all philanthropy, but funds that would be Ontario's share of a new homeland security facility that would be built, a part of the project, and Director Klein and I've been, Director Byington have been in long conversations with the province of Ontario, and we believe those funds will be there. We have not formalized that agreement, and so some of those are funds for their share of those homeland security improvements.
When we say Ontario, we're talking about the province of Ontario, up north.
Yes, excuse me, yeah, no, not the school.
When you said it at first, I didn't understand what you were talking about, and I had to think about it. They're, they're all smarter than I am, I just forgot, I just didn't think of it. I, I wanna comment on the design build, I hate design build, I generally hate it. Um, and, but you have persuaded me that in this instance, this is a better and smarter way to proceed. And I know you generally do not like design bid for a lot of reasons, uh, but I, I, I'm, I'm persuaded of, by your long expertise, uh, that that makes sense in this particular instance. Additional questions or comments on the Jackson Street Pier legislation?
I have, if no one else does, they all should get a chance to speak.
Go ahead.
All right, I have got thoughts on, uh, two things, I need to know why what I thought was a reasonable request to, uh, change the angle of the parking spaces at the end of the pier, at the north end of the pier, to angle parking, so folks could actually look out into the water, as opposed to, uh, at, uh, the, uh, buildings on either side, in the Murray Marina. It didn't seem unreasonable to do that, so, that needs to get done. I need, I'll start with a reason why it wasn't done, it was asked four or five months ago. That's one.
Well, that's, and that, that was previously debated when the commission approved the, uh, the conceptual plan.
I don't think it was debated, I think somebody said something that didn't make a lot of sense, so, you had, hopefully, five months to get, uh, a better, a better answer than just, that's, I don't even remember what it was.
Well, the discussion, as I recall it, was, maybe others have a different recollection, and staff can jump in as they see fit, but as I recall, the discussion was, angle parking reduces the number of parking slips, and it was a process of balancing, um, uh, the available space, green space, and the other amenities would be there, and the number of parking spaces.
Yes, and that, that, I'll go ahead.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole and Director Klein, and, and Director Byington was integrally involved in this, uh, we actually did look very, very hard at that, and so, and City Architecture, who was the planning consultant vehemently disagreed that we should have it, so we made a very difficult decision to recommend it for passage without the angle parking, but it was not something that we overlooked, it wasn't something that we didn't pay attention to.
Why did you vehemently decide that?
I believe, to Dennis's point, one was the amount of cars that you could park, as well as, there were some circulation issues, I believe, and, and, uh, safety issues related to sightlines or something along those lines, I don't remember specifically, but I remember a long conversation about this, staff saying, is this something we can accommodate, hearing their very good feedback, and ultimately making what was a very difficult and uneasy decision to bring the recommendation to leave it as head-in, you know, and, and I, I don't know, you know, I understand that that was an issue, but it was not something that we didn't very seriously consider.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Jackson Street Pier has had angle parking there forever. All the traffic flow and safety issues that may very well have been well-studied by these folks, it doesn't, it doesn't meet muster for me to, to support this. We are improving the pier for our use, you should, it should be better. This simple change makes it worse. Okay, when you go down to Jackson Street Pier, and you wanna look out at the water and see the boats go by, and you end up sitting looking at the Chesapeake, looking in the, the picture, the Chesapeake, or at your marina, which is what's on the other side, that defeats the purpose of improving this. Now, there are any number of ways that they could have fixed the traffic flow, I mean, you, you, they designed this the way it is, but you can't have, uh, whoever wanted grass there for the geese to have a place to go, uh, we are meeting their needs, and I've decided I'm not gonna argue too much about that, it's okay. Citizens are accepting it, but the reality, but you can't have people come out with less. And engineering people's behavior by design, that's something we learn in crime prevention. The environmental design of making those spaces unattractive for the use intended by those folks only gives them a reason to not come down there. Okay? It's your point, if you didn't enjoy what you're doing, it didn't meet your needs, you wouldn't come. And I'm not, I will, I, I just am not gonna do this, 'cause I, I recognize, your answer to why you didn't do it is just, just, just weak. It, it's nonexistent. In terms of spaces you lose, it might be one on each side, in terms of space, maybe one. And if you didn't do anything other, and it was recommended at the time, if you need ten more feet to make it work, then take ten feet of grass and just make that shorter. That's not an unreasonable request. The geese don't need two acres, they could use, lose ten feet. And if you won't do it, that's fine, then I'm gonna stand for the folks that, 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 that should be able to go out there and enjoy that pier. Additionally, the enclosed market pavilion, it was suggested that we were gonna move the farmer's market there, and perhaps you could have kids play chess, those are the things that were discussed about this enclosed pavilion. Well, the pavilion, I looked at, it's forty by eighty, was it sixty by eighty? Sixty by eighty. Well, the farmer's market is conducted in a space that's two hundred by sixty-six. The building that's been proposed in no way, in any form or fashion, could handle the farmer's market. Additionally, it's not even eighty feet long for use, because twenty feet at the end is storage and restroom. So, it's actually sixty by forty, sixty by forty, or whatever, point is, it ain't two hundred by sixty-six. So, again, you propose something that is twenty-five feet high, blocks the view of the water of Hot Dog Tony's, Karma, the wine shop, and sodas. The only place that's got a view of the waterfront will be O-Taco and Mosley's. I would suggest that does not make it better. That could provide, in fact, it provides a, a business advantage to one of our, one of the businesses on the street, because the back porch of the other businesses, they can't see the water, and that water is why you come down, and why you put, put a, a, a porch on the back of your building to serve your customers, 'cause you can see the water, that's what the whole point is. So, we, we, I'm gonna vote no, unless you change those things. The rest of it, the public seems to be happy with it, though I'm not happy with the grass idea, I see no point to it, it's not a gain. I wanna point out, we have not discussed or shown how taking a hundred and seventy-one parking spaces off of there impacts the businesses downtown that may need the, that may need space when we grow, when we add two hundred people to live down there, we've not even addressed it. Just say, oh, we got plenty of parking, don't worry, I'm gonna go with the flow and hold folks responsible at the end of the day, when it's done. But if you don't take those two things out of here, make those changes, I'm going to vote no, because they're, they're negative, they're taking away from folks, and no one should lose from a seventeen-million-dollar project. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Poole, a couple of thoughts, uh, that come to mind. I am recalling that, uh, that was part of the discussion that we had, um, back when we were talking about angle parking versus the head-in parking, and that backing out did create, um, a, a visibility issue, and therefore, um, a, a bit of a, maybe if not safety, certainly a, uh, bumper car kind of issue potentially, um, and, uh, and it was, I think it was a lot more than two spaces, I, I can't tell you the numbers anymore.
I remember clearly, I've done parking, I did parking for thirty-seven years at the hospital, so...
You don't, you...
I know what I'm talking about.
No, let me speak. Come on, no, let me speak, you've had your, your say, that's how I recall it. And the, the, the other issue is, you're entitled to cast your vote as you see fit, but there are many aspects of this plan that I wished had been different, um, um, but, um, you know, we went through a very long public process, and, uh, we did take a lot of input, made a lot of modifications as a result of, of that process, it was a very good process, but we got to a result, and we had to conceptually approve that plan, and I am not going to, uh, vote against the plan, um, even though there are some things that I would like to see included in it. I'm pretty proud of how the community went through that whole process, we did have a good civilized debate. Some of the folks in DC might take, um, a, a page from what we did there, um, and they could behave a little bit better, um, we'll leave that national embarrassment aside, uh, but, um, I, I thought it was good process, so therefore, I'm going to vote in favor of this proposal. Additional debate, Mr. Brady.
We have before you, before us tonight, this piece of legislation, and, and I think it represents a lot of compromise, that some of us wanted a lot more parking, and some of us didn't want any parking, and we ended up somewhere in between. But, on two separate occasions, this commission voted on this design, and, and we, and we passed, that, that legislation passed, uh, with six yeses and one abstention, and then seven yeses. So, to sit here and to try to wring out of us a change in design, I think it's in the wrong. I think the legislation is before you, if you don't like it, don't vote for it. If you do like it, I think, I think it does a service to everyone in this community.
Additional questions or comments on the legislation? Mr. Cresser, would you call, call the roll, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for transportation services between the city of Sandusky and serving our seniors for the period of October one, two thousand and eighteen, through September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
I'm assuming it was something that you said, Mrs. Cresser, and not me. Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
I move for the ad, adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
You know, I, I can't back this up a hundred percent, but it seems like our transit system serves the seniors, uh, probably, probably the majority of the riders, probably our seniors. And being as that we have a new transit administrator, um, and we're bringing in these new contracts, this is a good time to have a review of, of our old contracts and our new contracts, and kinda go through some of these things to see how we can better streamline what we're doing for the transit service. So...
So, Mr. Freitas, do you want to step to the podium and perhaps address, uh, the legislation and the particular question that, uh, Mr. Lockhart, uh, has posed? I know you've, uh, or the, the system has recently made some significant modifications in terms of having a central hub, I understand that's going very well, um, the numbers seem to be better than they've been in past years still, so maybe you could talk about all those things at the same time?
Yeah, so, um, the contract with serving our seniors had expired, and, um, sitting down was Sue. One of the, the problems that I had with the contract was, there was a three-tier, uh, pricing structure with it, so it was priced high up to so many rides, then the price dropped, and then... One of the, the problems that I had with the contract was there was a three-tier, uh, pricing structure with it, so it was priced high up to so many rides, then the price dropped, and then after that tier was satisfied, then it dropped down to actually zero. Um, so where we found is the ridership with Serving Our Seniors had increased, so by it starting at $14 a ride, we were going through the allocated funds pretty quickly. So as of like, I think it was middle of July, we were providing rides for free through the end of the contract. So, um, when we were looking at this, um, I wanted to change the structure of it, and so we propose, we're proposing a 2% increase, um, bringing it up to $175,440 for the year, which would be the, the cap. Um, we would change it to a per-month fee, so the fee would be $14,620. Roughly, we are taking about 13,000 Serving Our Senior trips a month, so that kind of evens out the rate to about $10, um, and that would be up to, you know, 14,620 people. So that's above what we're running on average monthly for Serving Our Seniors. So we, we're proposing just a one-year contract, Sue Doherty and I, um, to just kind of see where we're at level-wise and to see if she's coming ahead, if we're coming ahead, and to be able to kind of get a better grasp of it because the, the past pricing structure just wasn't working out well. Um, so that's, that's why we're proposing a change from a three-year contract to a one-year contract. Like I said, it's a 2% increase over what it was, and then, you know, we would reevaluate this after one year and see which is the best approach moving forward with this contract.
I mean, and that seems like a sufficient explanation of it. Uh, so I'm, I'm in favor of it today. Going forward, though, maybe in the next meeting or something, I'd like to see a presentation of the status of where we are with the transit, if you don't mind, at some point here in the near future.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. I would love to share what we're doing and all our changes and...
I'm sure the rest of commissioners might want to be interested in that, too.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Mr. Whoopsir, I think there's probably general interest on the part of, uh, just getting an update. I, you know, the next meeting or whenever you're comfortable, I don't know what other, you know, schedules you've got, uh, but, uh, you know, just a, a heads up in terms of where we're going. Uh, we have been very supportive as a, as a commission and as community of, of transit. We want to make sure we can continue to afford to do that, and, um, and I like the changes that you've made. They seem to be well-received, but, you know, a little bit of a longer-range plan would be quite welcome.
Yeah, I would love to be able to share that with the commission, so...
Okay, so we'll, you and Mr. Whoopsir can decide, and you'll let Kelly know, and we'll get that on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Okay. Additional, uh, questions regarding legislation? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement for professional design services with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers Limited of Toledo, Ohio, for the Pier Trac Pump Station and Farwell Pump Station Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement for professional design services with CT Consultants Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, for the McCartney Road Reconstruction Storm Sewer and Storm Pump Station Design Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please, Mr. Cresser.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ohio Telecom Incorporated of Fort Clinton, Ohio, for the city-owned fiber extension project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. That concludes our regular items of business. We turn now to Mr. Whoopsir for his managers' report.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, remaining audience, and staff. I like the audience. I apologize if this is a little off. I think I lost consciousness after the votes on Shoreline Drive and the pier, but I'm trying to gather myself, but I, I do want to say, first of all, thank you to the City Commission for those votes. I know they were difficult. This is the longest and most arduous community project for any project that I've ever been involved in, um, and it wasn't easy, but the fact that you hung in there in the way that you did and pushed the staff to, uh, make choices that were in line with the community's goals while also trying to move the community forward was just, it was really wonderful leadership on your part. I also want to commend the staff. Angie, I know that the second stage of the design, um, was certainly not the, that was under the really capable hands of Director Klein in his office, uh, and I wish Megan Stuckey were here so I could thank her as well, but, uh, that conceptual plan would not have passed without your work and the work of your office, and I don't want to forget that, and, and really everybody on the staff and everyone on the community. So I really do believe in the future of that project. I know, uh, it will not be easy to build it either, and that we're going to have a lot more, uh, to talk about and discuss, but, uh, I'm just really thankful to work for a commission and for a staff that, uh, that handled that adversity in such a powerful way, so thank you. Uh, with that, I'll start with the donations. First, a donation of 10 body-worn cameras was received by the Sandusky Police Department from the Erie County Sheriff's Office. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second. Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the sheriff.
Uh, second, a donation from Seal Master for creating a custom batch of traffic paint and donating four pails worth $625 to the Division of Streets and Traffic, so the Wounded Warrior parking spots in the Jackson Street parking lot in Shoreline Park could be customized with purple paint. I know Aaron's office, as well as Chief Orzek, have been involved in that, and we'd ask for a motion to accept those in-kind donations.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to Seal Master, and my own thanks for not having to spend that much on a gallon of paint. It's expensive paint.
Must be commercial-grade, I suppose. Uh, also, moving on to new and old business administration, um, I will be appointing Chris Parthmore, the Executive Director of the Sandusky State Theater, as well as a resident of the city, uh, to a recent vacancy on the Public Art and Culture Commission, as there's been a, a, a change. Uh, we welcome Chris and look forward to his contribution to public art in the city. Uh, Chris was involved in the creation of the Sandusky State Theater's mural on the back wall, so we think he'll be a really good, uh, person to add to that team in the absence. But we want to thank Beth Maiden for her early service. She had some family health issues that caused her to not be able to attend, but we look forward to Chris. Uh, moving on to the Police Department, Assistant Chief Phil Frost has announced his retirement effective at the end of this week. After 30-plus years of service to the community, we want to give him a shout-out for his leadership and service, uh, to the department, but really to the entire city. Uh, you know, Phil was somebody that worked really closely with cross-departmental initiatives with Safety Chief. I don't know if he wanted to add anything to that. We're thankful. Also, officers participated in the St. Jude's Research Hospital fundraiser hosted by Chili's Restaurant on October 3rd, uh, and the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is Friday, October 19th, 2018, at 7:45 a.m. in the Commission Chambers. Moving on to Public Works, the Street Department has been working hard to complete in-house resurfacing of several streets, including portions of Taylor, Warren, Wayne, and Lane 1. This work is funded by Issue 8, and purchase of the asphalt was approved by the Commission earlier this year. Once paving concludes, crews will transition to citywide leaf pickup in November. Details on leaf collection will be released soon. Also, staff is requesting qualifications to undertake the design of the new Justice Center facility, including development of a site plan with certain recreational facilities through the normal RFQ process. Qualification packets are due Monday, November 5th, 2018. Uh, staff has also finalized the species and locations for 32 new curbside trees that will be planted this fall as part of our tree program. Uh, the list of locations is attached. Uh, also, in November 2017, Commission approved a request to purchase a Vibro screen for $40,000. This machine separates asphalt, rocks, and other debris from soil that can be beneficially reused on city projects, which would save sewer streets and waterfunds the cost of purchasing new material and save landfill disposal costs. Staff estimated the return on investment to be about 16 months. As of September 20th, which was about 10 months, the savings, uh, passed $41,000, nearly $42,000. It does not include estimating savings and disposal materials. We've already done that ahead of schedule, and, uh, I wish the, the Public Works Department congratulations for that. Uh, drive-through drop-off day was a success thanks to the valiant effort of the Sandusky High School Gentlemen's Club and several city residents, commissioners, staff members, and police officers who donated their time to help keep Sandusky beautiful. The event serviced 550 carloads, uh, collected 570 tires, 200 mattresses, and more than 20 containers full of scrap metals, old appliances, and trash. Uh, I did not get a chance to volunteer, but I did get a chance to stop by with one of my little guys, and there were a lot of commissioners there working hard. Uh, you know who you are, we're very thankful for that, uh, as well as an incredible amount of city staff that were there working and volunteering as well, so it was really great. And this was by far the busiest I've seen it. Uh, I had to walk past cars from beyond the Chesapeake downtown to get there, so it was, it was a really busy day, and it's taken a lot of stuff. Commissioner Twine, did you want to say something to that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand. I apologize.
Hold on. Trying to keep awake.
It was a great one. Apparently I won a Grammy. Poor bastard. The rest of the audience.
Kelly needs a present.
I'm a little monotone, I can't follow you sometimes.
Okay. Unfortunately, the city was not awarded, this one is a bad one to be monotone, not to be monotone for, the NRPA grant application for green infrastructure at J.C. Park. Park improvement plans will still move forward, and will continue to pursue other funding opportunities as they arise. It is in our five-year capital improvement plan. Moving on to the Planning Department, the Warren Street Community Fall Fund Day, which Talon referred to in his presentation, is planned for Sunday, October 21st, from 11th a, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. The event will take place in the 1100 block of Warren Street. I overheard a meeting taking place next to my office today for the planning. I think it's going to be a great event. Uh, the Regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 24th, at 4:30 p.m. in Commission Chambers. Board of Zoning Appeals will be on the 18th at 4:30 p.m., also in the Commission Chambers. And finally, the Landmark Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 17th, at 4:30 p.m., also in the Commission Chambers. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Questions? How much should see me?
Chairman.
Bobby.
Uh, I believe another commissioner was with me at the time. We were asked about the Keller Building Site, about the fence being up there, if that's going to come down. Is there anything further, is, uh, development for that site? Is there anything back from the developer, the old Keller Building Site?
Uh, I talked to Matt about it today, and he's looking into it. He's going to call. We know, we know that we've been waiting on plans, and he's still actively pursuing a project there. He's had a little bit of, a few changes that he's made to the project, but we are reaching out to him, and we'll look both at the conditions of the site, as well as a potential start date for one that will go forward, so...
Yeah, I don't know why the fence has to be up. What's the point?
A weird question, Dick. I think you were with me, right?
Mr. Chairman. If the fence, you know, the fence isn't protecting anything. It would look 1,000% better without the fence. I certainly understand the need of a fence if you're about to begin construction, but, you know, that looks like it may be some ways off. I would, it's not much of a fence either. I mean, you and I could take it down, well, I could take it down this afternoon, but, uh, it was, you know, maybe we could encourage him to, to deal with that because it is, it is negatively impacting the neighbor next door, who is, he's just trying to cut his weeds, and he can't get at him because of the, because of the rickety fence that's around his property. Thanks.
Why is the fence there?
I think it was because they anticipated construction.
Construction.
She didn't go forward, is that right? From my guessing.
Sorry, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, he initially put it up both for site security, but more importantly, when he initially had marketing banners that ran the full length around the site, as we know with Northwest winds coming right to that property, it ripped off the banners pretty quickly. He's maintained the fence in the interim, but certainly I think we've heard from the Commission tonight, we've gotten a few recent calls from Chesapeake residents to look at just pulling the fence down until he's prepared to start construction.
Makes sense to me. I do have a question. Uh, where are we on the, uh, no-wake sign? Behind us.
Twine, I understand the no-wake sign is in, is, is in construction?
Yes.
We're going to have it, it's going to be replaced.
Three, Mr. President, uh, to Mr. Commissioner Poole, um, yes, the, the sign department is preparing the no-wake sign right now. They're going to prepare a second sign about keeping the distance as well, and we'll get those signs up as soon as they're done.
Additional questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lockhart.
I, uh, just wanted some clarity. I had a lot of folks come to me about recycling, so if you could just reiterate that for the recycling folks out there. I had no idea so many people were, that, uh, concerned about it, but they are, and they, they just want to make sure that they'll be able to continue recycling.
Uh, through the Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart, Director Klein, and Commissioner Brady worked very hard over the course of the past few weeks to help, uh, we had a few calls and, and then face-to-face meeting with Republic, and ultimately negotiated a price to continue the contract through April 15th, which we think is a fair one. We don't like it, obviously, because it was, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a real cost, but we have, they were, they pointed out enough to us so that we know the costs are real to them. Ultimately, that gives us till April 15th to figure out what we want to do beyond April 15th, and, and that's going to take probably doubling those efforts, and we know that some different options were, uh, brought forward by some of the commissioners. Uh, we want to evaluate those internally and with the public, and then ultimately make a decision, but we do want to continue recycling and know that there are very many residents[1588.33] some different options were brought forward by some of the commissioners. We want to evaluate those internally and with the public, and then ultimately make a decision, but we do want to continue recycling and know that there are very many residents who take it very seriously, and want to see it continued and expanded throughout the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
With regard to recycling, I'm very comfortable with the arrangement that they've made with Republic to get that taken care of, the recycling, and the number of people that that covers, I think it's money well spent, and we need to lead the community in the direction of ensuring that we say, hey, recycling's a good idea. I would like to ask or recommend, whatever you like, the point, the Register had a nice article about it, in which they listed things that should be recycled, shouldn't be recycled, and please, you can get back to us, but I think we should have that posted at the recycling centers, so that people know what they should and shouldn't be putting in. Additionally, and I haven't, I've been, I usually go to the first street one, designate which side to put the paper, plastics on, and which side gets the wood, or gets the cardboard. When I go there, I find that it's all mixed, and there's no indication one way or another, which typically, that people are simply putting it in the first one they see, or whatever's closest where they stopped their car, and if we're going to try to enforce that, force this, that people, you know, use it properly, we should have some signs up that indicates what we want them to do.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Watson.
As you're quite aware, you're down in Columbus, the House Bill 592 recycling is the responsibility through the counties, okay? I talked to Kelly earlier this morning, I'm going to Overland Friday morning, I think you have a contact tomorrow, and I'm going to go through their facility to see what needs to be cleaned, and that's what Mr. Poole says is very good. Instead of dumping it, I know it all goes on conveyor belts and gets separated, but even a little bit of food or anything, it's just discarded, and that's what I want to see firsthand when I go there Friday morning, I'm going to go through the facility.
I appreciate...
Used to have a transit station, remember, out in 101?
Yeah.
You went out there, and then they took it to Overland, but I just want to see it for myself, as far as...
And while you're there, I appreciate you're going, while you're there, I would like to know how much of the recycling really gets recycled, because we keep hearing that the costs... So, here's the thing about recycling, we like to believe, and it's really just make-believe, that the haulers are making money from the steel and the glass and the plastics and the cardboard. The only thing that makes any money are metals and cardboard, the rest of it is a huge loss, especially glass. And then, there's all this handling that's involved, so if you have a recycling contract, you pay to get rid of your recyclables. There's no net benefit to that. And so, if we're not really disposing of, if it's not really getting recycled, and we're paying this money for it, I really, I really question whether we're getting anything. So, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that they're not doing it, but I keep reading about this, and would like some assurances.
Okay. And what I got here, this comes from our Commission Clerk, the gal she spoke to today, she said residents pay $750 a month, they also have a fee added on to their property taxes. We had looked at that years ago, putting like a dollar or two buck kitty on our water bill for, to go towards recycling. We originally went through Lisa Burson from the county, we got the two bins, accounted for 10,000 residents. I was involved with a lot of that early stuff, but on the back page now, so that's why I'm going to re-educate myself, and then I'll bring that at a future commission meeting. So, I want to get it right from the horse's mouth, but it also says here, they also have a fee added on to property taxes, but was not sure the amount of the recycling garbage collection. So, I want to see it firsthand, then I know. Is this worthwhile going forward, or what do we do?
Additional questions for, or comments for the City Manager? Then we will turn to old business. Anyone having items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watson.
Maybe two months ago, I had asked about the NASA pumping station, you know, the county has, that they'd taken it from the federal government. My question at the time, or I guess my concern was, I'm all for it. I know that Mr. Shenico and the county commissioners put a $200,000 investment in the pumps, but going in my past history on the commission, we were concerned, not so much the way it laid out into the lake, because some of that could be offset, but would it need sleeving and divers, or some type of pressure testing? That's a long traveler. There could be a spot a mile or two inland where it's collapsed, we don't know. And I, and I've support going forward with this, but maybe a joint effort with the county, let's pressure test it, so we all know for sure, so we can go forward, because this was supposed to be done 12/31 of 17, correct?
Yep.
Is that the date? So, don't want to battle, let's work with them and see, you know, pressure testing, fault tests, I heard fault tests, but I don't know if that one's accurate, you know, we're all records of this. But that's something else that I've been, you know, dealing with in the past, and when my reading in the Register said they're ready to pump 12 million gallons a day, well, that may be factual with the pumps, but what about transmission lines going to NASA and then reverse pumping into Sandusky? That's a long distance. I don't want to blow up Route 6 or 250 or a neighborhood, you know, without knowing that component first. So, I think we do need to reach out and get that resolved.
Yeah, just to put this in some context, you know, you and I have talked about this, Mr. Watson, we need a more reliable, long-term secondary intake. We have...
Oh, yeah.
We've made the one that we have last a little bit longer, but long-term water trends, water level trends are down, and we need to have another intake that goes out to the lake, and that was $7 million the last time we looked at it, and I'm sure it's a whole lot more than that now. This could still be a savings to us, but we, as the, as Erie County's leading water supplier, have to make, make certain that we have a secure water supply long-term, and we need to, we need to fish or cut bait on this secondary intake as an option for us, so, and as you point out, this was supposed to be decided at the end of last year, so we need to know, and I recently asked Mr. Klein if he couldn't get some feedback from the EPA. The central question seems to be, is flow testing sufficient, or do we have to pressure test? I know he doesn't have an answer yet, but that's, that's the, I don't know, I think it's the $5 million question, maybe more. Additional questions or comments for the City Manager? Or, I'm sorry, we're on old business. Any items of new business? One that Mrs. Cresser was adamant to make sure that I remembered to bring up, which is the sidebar before, is I need to request a public hearing, because she's right to ask, she's right to remind me, because I forget sometimes, but I need to request that we set a public hearing for November 13 at 5:00 p.m. to consider the vacation of an alley at Cleveland Road and Farwell Street. So, would someone make a motion to set that?
Second.
An emotion, second discussion? Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the hearing is set. Any other items of new business? Then we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any items of city business? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, again. It's not too many times when I stand here and thank the City Commission and thank staff, so I'm going to take this opportunity. It sounds like we're taking care of the Jack, or the Washington Street pier issue with no-wake, and also boaters, you know, stays so far away from the pier. Appreciate that. Just a couple of comments on design-build, real quick. Design-build probably works pretty well with a new Justice Center, Police Department, a new water and sewer plant, those types of issues, but when you had a long drawn-out process for Shoreline Drive and Jackson Street Pier, several public meetings, several sidebar meetings with city staff, the City Manager, and at the end of the day, when only 30% of both those projects are done, at the end of the day, you might have a completely different project from what was presented at all those meetings, and that, that's risky, that's very risky. You know, maybe somebody can straighten me up when I sit down, but you know, I just, 30% done, again, it could be a totally different project at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwager. Mr. Klein, could we talk about that a little bit, because I don't think we've fully addressed that, and it's an important point. As I understand it, the basic concepts, at this point, are going to be honored as part of the contract. The question is, just exactly how is it going to get done? And could you just speak to that a little bit?
So, Mr. President, on any typical project, whether it's a design-build or a design-bid-build, the heavy lifting and the majority of the real engineering and design work is done within that first 30%. You're only taking that last 7% to deal with what kind of bend you're putting in the sewer to get around something that you're not even sure is there, because you haven't done the excavation yet. The contractor in the field in the design build will be able to incorporate that without having to specifically get into it. We don't have to get the price for all those things. So, that heavy lifting and all that work is done typically within that 30%, and then you're just refining things, things like, I don't want to rehash it, but things like the angled parking on Jackson Street Pier. That's something that, you know, we can bring that in later. We have the quantities for the curb, we have the quantities for those types of things, and then we can start analyzing and getting in towards the end of the project. I would say that something like a Justice Center would not be an ideal situation, because you need something very specific, something very particular. You want the jail, you want the security, you want the surveillance, you want all of those things to be very specific, very particular, very high-end. So, you know, this, I've been doing this for 18 years, and this would be my fifth design-build project, fifth and sixth design-build projects. And I would say that as long as you have an approach that we had initially, a very detailed approach, a very involved approach, that we have the concepts, we have everything written down, we know what the public wants, and we're not straying from that, then I think this is the perfect approach to a design, the perfect time to do a design-build project.
Good thing, Mr. Klein. Did anyone else wish you to address the commission?
RC Plant 1217, Columbus Avenue. I would like to know what percentage of my sewer and water bill goes to the general fund of the sewer and water?
Don't know how to answer your question, Soloway.
So, where does that money come from?
The question is, what percentage of your sewer and water bills goes to the sewer and water fund?
Actual usage of what I actually use, is there a percentage of what I actually use that you add on as an international fudge factor to go towards the lines and things like that?
Oh, nothing, right.
So, it's already factored in?
So, the, what is, what is collected on water and sewer, as a matter of state law, has to remain within the water and sewer funds. Those are utilities, they're not part of the general government, and those monies remain there.
So, where does the money from the general sewer fund come from that's being used on the Jackson Street Pier and the Shoreline Drive?
From the water and sewer funds, to fund those utility replacements and improvements.
So, that comes from my payment that I make?
Yes, and it goes to replace the water pipes and the sewer pipes and the work that's necessary to lay all those and design them, yep.
So, my actual money went to those projects from the money that you made off of my water and my sewer?
Sure, and it's been that way for 200 years.
I'm not saying it isn't.
We're helping along with that water and sewer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to understand where it's, where it's coming from.
No.
I'd like to know, a lot of governments will report after a period of time, I'm sure you've heard of the jobs report, and I, I would like to put out to commission here that it is possible for you to figure out how many full-time jobs the city of Sandusky has acquired with any, any given period. You can go to RITA, you can use it through the income tax, you can figure out whether somebody's working full-time or not based upon minimum wage, and what they would pay if they made minimum wage over a full-time job. So, I wondered if in the future, you could do a jobs report for us and be able to report how many additional jobs, whether they're gained or lost, in the city of Sandusky?
I think there's some of that information in the, in the CAFER, but I think we can ask Mr. Soloway if he can't provide us with some more detailed information.
Okay. I would like, you know, one of the issues that the resident Sanduskeys have talked about is that we'd like to get some more full-time jobs, and I don't think a huge amount have been secured probably the last five years. It would be nice to know if the city is indeed working on that, and how they're doing quarterly on that. My last comment was that I'd like to know why the city can have alternatives to their different plans, especially the Jackson Street Pier, that if they don't get the $2,000, $200,000, they can change certain things, but when Mr. Poole brings up issues which concerned residents have brought to him, he's being criticized for bringing those up. And, for instance, as far as parking, when Mr. Pesta was here, Mr. Pesta couldn't even tell us what the dimensions of a handicap parking spot would be, and maybe that was out of his scope of practice, but that's the last time all of us stood in this room and discussed it. So, I don't know why, you're criticized for that, Mr. Poole, but I really appreciate that you bring up some of the citizens' concerns, and I hope all the commissioners do, but I really do not believe that you should be criticized for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plow.
Ethan Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I'll take off of what she was stating about the parking spaces. Unlike Mr. Pesta's design, my designs had measurements. I went to the end of the pier, I measured the end of the pier. There's 13 parking spaces down there now. Mr. Pesta did not know how big a, the AD requirements were for a parking space for situations like that, and he's planning on 15 parking spaces across the end. There's only 13 there now, so he's going to have to squish some parking spaces in there, and that makes it more difficult for the people in the second row to watch the boats go down, across the lake. They can watch the storms, but they can't watch anything on the lake. I also measured the side diagonal parking. If you diagonal park the cars, you eliminate one parking space on each side. That's all. There's not a lot of parking spaces missing, it's one. I measured it, I chalked it out. And the other question was, what's the ticket going to be for parking diagonally on the pier, because a lot of people say they're going to do it anyways, because that's how you view the lake, and that's why you go down there, to view the lake. So, I was wondering what it's going to cost when you get a ticket for parking illegally in a head-in parking space instead of a diagonal parking space. Congratulations on your roundup, I'm real happy with that. We can't get anything done out in Perkins Township. They have thrown their hands up, we can't get anything done, we can't get a roundup done at the fairgrounds for collecting appliances, or hazardous waste or anything. I was wondering, have the no-smoking signs been put up at the parks? I haven't been around a whole lot lately, and I haven't noticed what's going on at the parks. And I'm not sure, I mean, I understand trying to get something done before the end of October, because it'll raise the prices of the pier and stuff, but I don't understand why it's been a year that you gave them the okay to come up with design and, and pricing, and all they came up with was 30%. That is incredible to me. I don't get that. The building design, I would think, would be much better if you had 70% of this project done in paperwork. The Pyramid Park, that's gorgeous, that is really pretty. I was in Worcester this weekend, and they have a same situation, they had a big corner in town, they took out a really nice gazebo, and they put in a freestyle situation like the Pyramid Park, and they put in gardens, and they've got picnic tables and seating and everything, and it's really pretty. And it's full of homeless people now, and I was hoping, I don't know if you've got a plan on not letting that start down in that area, instead of letting it start happening and then start dealing with it next year or something, because it's a protected area, it would keep people out of the rain and the snow and stuff, but that's, that gets scary when you're walking down the street with your kids, and there's somebody homeless sleeping on a bench in there, or hanging around in there for hours, and I hope that that's going to be dealt with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I think this design to build is a fiasco. It's poor planning. This is going to cost us a lot of money, folks, $16 million, and Hank can't certify the funds are here. Can't certify the funds. As far as the donors are concerned, that $2 million, is that going to come through this commission, and will we know the names and the amounts?
We did cover that during the meeting, Mrs. Johnson.
Pardon?
We did cover that during the meeting.
So, we will know the names and the amounts, then?
Yes, we did cover that during the meeting.
All right, I'm just checking. When do you think that'll happen, because this is underway now?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, it depends upon when they make their donations, I believe. And we'll, we'll vote on it as soon as those donations are made, so that we can accept those donations. That's, that's as much specificity as I can provide at this point.
And we're sitting here, and we don't know what the end result is going to be. 30% design work done, and we won't know, we'll be all surprised. That is poor, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There being no one else to speak, if someone makes, wishes to make a motion to adjourn? Someone?
Second.
May adjourn.